Public Law 1975 entitled open Republican Act. Adequate notice of this board meeting has been provided and specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 7, 2019. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices mail to the county township clerk. Advertisement and eldest son of Starletter on January 17, 2019 posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Can we stand for a place?
I'd like to. Mr. Vay, the United States of America, to be with the public just as it stands. We're nation of honor. We will do what we believe is right. Please. Please. Mr. Vay.
Here.
Mr. Vay.
Here.
Mr. Corra.
Here.
Mr. Zinski.
Here.
Mrs. Kirk.
Upstate.
Mr. Riley.
Upstate.
Mr. Sora.
Yes.
Miss Saram.
Upstate.
Mr. Carticella.
Yes. Just for public record, the extensions were due to the fact that the sitting board members were not here for the time that year.
Mr. President, I don't think the mic is, I don't think the speakers are working. Oh, your light is on, but I don't think it's going up to the iPods.
All right. Can you hear me back there? Okay. So, just for public notice, the extensions that you heard tonight were due to the new board members that were sitting that abstained. They were not here for the minutes that were approved. We actually postponed the approval of those minutes at the last meeting, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to start off with our first presentation for this evening. It's going to be the comprehensive annual financial report. This is Liz Shek from Lurch, Ninsy and Higgins.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, I've worked at Lurch, Ninsy and Higgins for almost 30 years now as a manager. Very familiar with Nutley's audit, doing it for several years. This is the audit for June 30th, 2018. There was a delay this year. Usually the audit is due December 5th. There was a new governmental.
Who pulled the microphone?
Is that better? Better? Okay. There was a new governmental accounting standards board that went into effect this year that required us to disclose the post-retirement health benefit number in your CAFER. So, we were waiting for the state to come out with that number for every school district in the state of New Jersey. The CAFER, the due date changed from December 5th to January and subsequently was changed to February 28th. So, the CAFER is not late this year, but it's just, we're presenting it a lot later than normal. Just wanted everyone to understand that. Can you hear me? It's okay? Okay. So, you have the CAFER for June 30th, 2018. If you look, do you have the synopsis or are you going through the book? It's okay. So, right now I have the CAFER, which is the thicker of the two books that you have. And it's also, if you have the audit synopsis, it's the balance sheet on the audit synopsis. Page 29. It's your balance sheet.
Page 29.
And I just want to state that the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and government auditing standards and that the district did receive an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best audit opinion that you can receive. So, at June 30th, the district had over $6.5 million in cash and investments and $106,000 in receivables. That receivable number does not include almost $1.6 million that the state owed you as of June 30th. They delayed their final state aid payment to July for their budgeting purposes, so we can recognize it in your financial statements on a GAAP basis. And at June 30th, the district had over $6.7 million in fund balances, of which over $4 million was earmarked for your capital reserve, $500,000 was earmarked for maintenance reserve, $875,000 was considered excess surplus to be used as tax relief in next year's budget, and you used another $875,000 of excess surplus to fund your 18, 19 budget, leaving you with an undesigned fund balance of $287,000, which is just about 2%, which is what the state recognizes allowing you to keep. Does anybody have any questions on that? So, that's your general fund, that's your operating fund. Other funds that you have, for those of you who aren't familiar with this, your special revenue fund, which is your grants, your capital projects fund, which is for your large capital projects. Right now, you see that there's a $587,000 available for capital projects, but of that $550,000 is for your middle school parking lot. And then the final fund that you have is the debt service fund. On a budgetary basis, your fund balance of the district is $1.9 million. That includes the state aid, the delayed state aid payment. So, for your budgeting purposes, you have $1.9 million going forward. Does anybody have any questions from that? Then I'll go over the audit recommendations, which, if you have the smaller of the two reports, the smaller report is called the auditor's management report, and that has your comments and recommendations and compliance issues. It goes through what we tested and what we found. You look on the last page of that, page 13, you'll see a summary of the audit recommendations. The district received four recommendations. The first one was the budget appropriations and expenditures for property and liability insurance be reported in accordance with the Department of Education budget guidelines and chart of accounts. That's just a budgeting issue. It subsequently be taken care of in your 18, 19 financials. The second recommendation is the payroll agency ledger by deduction be currently maintained and reconciled with the bank reconciliation on a monthly basis. Under school food services, it is recommended that the district review the operations of its food service enterprise fund to ensure that the net cash resources do not exceed the three-month average expenditures. That's a calculation required by the Department of Agriculture. Primarily what they're saying is there's too much cash right now in that fund, and so we just need to spend some of that to get it below that threshold. And then lastly, regarding the student activity accounts, it's recommended that the high school's student activity account be reconciled to the financial records on a monthly basis. Does anybody have any questions on those? All right, that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Just on the food services, how do they wind up with excess money there?
It's a calculate. The state doesn't want you to have more than three months of your average operating expenditures. So, you get, the state reimburses you dollar notes based on your free and reduced lunch applications. So, sometimes based on that, you're collecting more cash than, you might not be charging enough, or you're bringing in extra income from the teachers' lunches or things that aren't eligible for that. So, it's just a matter of monitoring it and then spending it. If you spend on equipment, it doesn't go into that calculation, so it doesn't help you spend that money. So, you need to either charge more overhead costs, like if you're not allocating enough custodial or electricity or something, you can charge more items like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Vay. He's going to do the sixth grade pilot.
Yeah, bud.
You have a presentation, Mr. Vay?
Yes, it's up here.
Okay, that's fine. We'll shift on.
Can everybody hear me if I just talk?
You'd like it to the microphone.
I'm sorry?
Might be better to the microphone.
Okay.
I mean, to the camera.
Thank you.
If this isn't near you, that's good.
I'll speak into this. It's pretty good. Just want to thank the board and Dr. Blazer for allowing me to present tonight. The goal of tonight's presentation is to bring the public and board up to speed with what's going on in sixth grade. We've gone through a lot of thinking about sixth grade the past couple of years. We've done some moves, strategic moves, and the whole idea is just to talk about it publicly tonight. Janine, thank you for moving me forward in the presentation tonight. Before we get started into what our thought was, starting in about the spring of 2017 to present, I wanted to describe just some educational jargon, some terms for everybody in the room, and just talk about what these things mean, so we're all on the same page. There are a couple of terms when talking about classes in elementary school. The first one is self-contained. That typically means students are with the same teacher all day. It's a generalist teacher, and they teach every subject area. So, they're going to teach science, social studies, English, health even in our elementary schools. The term departmentalization, also known as platooning, this term typically means students move between content specialists that have a depth of knowledge about that subject area, and the teachers typically platoon one or two courses, one or two subjects, I should say. The word teaming usually associated with the middle school. It is a form of departmentalizing, and teaming really allows the core teachers to meet together and have structured time to talk about the students. It, you know, not only departmentalizes those teachers, but also to every extent, talking about the set group of students, the underassessed students they have on their team. So, it's a little more structure there. We also bring in electives at the middle school with teaming. Advisory is a big role in teaming, where students get the social emotional support they need throughout the transition from about 10 years to 14 years old, in that range. I also built a chart just comparing some of those things out there in the educational world. Self-contained, you have your generalist teacher. By the way, there's pros and cons to all strategies up here. Content specialist, when you get to departmentalization. Teaming, also content specialist teachers. The self-contained teacher will teach all classes, have typically about five preps a day. That means five different subjects they have to prepare for, and each one of those classes taught once, the next day is another set of lessons in those five subjects. The departmentalized teacher has one or two subjects, depending on how it works. They have one or two preps, and they teach those preps multiple times, so they'll teach the same lesson twice or three times in that day. That has a benefit. Teaming, same thing. One subject typically is one prep, although some elective courses, there's two preps on the middle school schedule. They teach those multiple times in a day. The self-contained classroom is very flexible, right? You can go in between different subject areas at the pace that you need to. You can also integrate very well one subject in that. So, there's definitely a benefit, self-contained, in that aspect, whereas departmentalized is content-driven, and the depth of knowledge allows teachers to differentiate. That means take, teach to the high students, teach to the low students in the class, and tier instruction. And teaming allows you to do both, right? You can integrate across the content, your team meetings, so you can bring in that integration of different subjects, as well as differentiate with your content specialists. If you're self-contained, you're collaborating with your great-grandparents peers, right? If you're departmentalizing, you're going to collaborate with your department, you bring in the coordinators into that mix, the continuum. And if you're teaming, you're collaborating with both your department and other team teachers in that period once a day where you meet to talk about these things. Self-contained, all the students are in one class. And departmentalized, the classes typically move as a class between different subjects. And in teaming, the students typically move independently, right? So, they start off in a homeroom if you'll, and then they move to a different first period, different second period. In the team, they'll see the same core teachers, but at different times. Okay? So, maybe any questions about any of these things before we move forward? Just some terminology. Okay. Moving forward, you know, this is starting about spring of 2017. There are a lot of things going on, and there was definitely a need that was established, a lot of conversations that were happening around the district. So, at that time, we were looking to really help students transition to the middle school. We were finding that students could use more independence. They're getting older, but they're still in an elementary school setting. They moved to seventh grade, they're there for two years, and then they're in the high school. So, we were looking to give students an experience that would build independence and self-reliance. We also had our curriculum changing. We were getting deeper. Our curriculum revisions were scaling up expectations across our district, and that's a good thing. We're getting into our content. More about the rigor of instruction and programming, we were looking for science and social studies to happen every day, similar to how it happens at middle school. We were looking for more PE and health instruction. That's everyday occurrence in middle school, it is not in the elementary school. We were looking for more world language instruction, everyday occurrence in the middle school, not in the elementary school. And we're looking to scale up the electives, give students an exploratory look at what they would be experiencing when they have to go pick electives at the middle school. We also had a strong need to bring a STEAM program in to multiple grade levels, but sixth grade, we felt was critical as well. And we also thought about advisory. Advisory is a program we have at the middle school. It's twice a month, and it gives our students the skills they need to navigate a changing world for a middle school student. It's challenging, and advisory gives lessons on digital citizenship and texting, things that they need as they go through life. We also want to prepare students for, I'm sorry, prepare our teachers for the transition to the middle school. There was a lot of talk about the middle school expanding to include the sixth grade, and as we thought more about that, we wanted to make sure we had the content specialists in district, and we were thinking about that move several years ahead of time, so it was not a last-minute move. So, with all these things in mind, we went back to the previous slide and asked, you know, what strategy should the district look toward? In the history of Nutley, we had been departmentalized, I want to say six, seven years ago. We moved away for the benefits of self-inclusion, of integration, and with an ever-changing need, you know, should we start looking at departmentalization? So, we did. Two slides to you. So, we went out, we looked, and we did our research, right? These articles up here were not just all in, they continue to come to our desk, and we've known about them before then, but we looked at a lot of strategies for that elementary classroom. It told us a lot. It told us sometimes, there's a direct correlation between having content specialists and student performance. It told us that for teach morale, departmentalization may help teachers as they teach the class multiple times throughout the day. Sometimes it told us the opposite. Sometimes it told us, you know, it was really challenging, because a lot of the articles talked about departmentalization in third, fourth, and fifth grade, whereas sixth grade is usually incorporated with the middle school already, right? The state model has middle school six through eight, so even with their structure, we don't fit in there too well. So, we took this and a lot of educational research, and we went into our next phase, and we did some action research, which means we put the plan into action, we're looking for results. We had Rackliff School, which had content specialists in the grade level. The small movement, we were able to get them there. So, we had a teacher who would teach ELA and social studies, and a teacher that'd teach math and science. We had two sections. We put a schedule together where they shared the students, and the whole class moved from teacher to teacher. We were able to have everyday social studies and science for students there. This is during the 17th and 18th school year. We were able to expand our health offerings. We had the PE health teacher teach health, which was a little different. We had world language. We had a middle school teacher come down and teach middle school world language program to the students at Rackliff School. We also were able to introduce a STEAM course through a PE specialist at that school. And during that time, we had three periods a week. We could get the teachers together to collaborate, to team. And what we found, that's a lot of colors up there, but let me walk you through it a little bit. For, this is 100% stat column, right? These are our park scores, and there's a lot of information. There's all the way to the left, it says park on the bottom. That's how park did. Everyone took the park. The second column is New Jersey, over four years, that's why I see four charts. Then we have Nutley, that's district data, and then we have Rackliff School data in the green. And you have ELA, and you have math on the right. The blue is the five, the C D expectations. The green is the four, grade level expectations. Yellow is approaching, right? And there's another yellow, that's a two, and red is below expectations. So, the whole idea is to increase the green and blues, right, and decrease the other colors moving forward, student performance. And this painted a different picture for us. While it's a small sample set, there's variables, we should consider looking at data like this. If you look at the difference, a couple of things to look at, between the green and the yellow in the Rackliff data, Janine, thanks to you, right there, you can see a significant jump in student performance, whereas over 90% of our students that participated in this met or exceeded expectations. You could also see another point to look at is the tripling of the students that scored a five in ELA. So, that was pretty impressive data coming back. Math is another story, and you could see, and you can compare it against district data as well. You can see these schools outperforming the other district as a whole. The other side is math, and you see a trend, if you follow the green and yellow, of it kind of going backwards, not the way we want the data to look right there, and then you see that kind of adjust. You also see no students scoring red there, which is pretty impressive. So, you know, judging this data, getting this back was confirmation that we should at least keep looking at into this, right? This is a progression we should consider, because some of this data we have coming out allows us to think that we're doing something along the right track. So, next slide. We expanded it during the school year. We kept Rackliff going. We expanded it to Washington School, Anna's College School, Lincoln School. Lincoln School is another little area for us, because we have three sessions there. So, we really have departmentalization, where you have an ELA teacher teaching three ELA classes, math teacher teaching three math classes throughout the day, then you have another teacher splitting science and social studies. So, that's another little twist on our pilot model. We were able to expand the STEAM class through creative scheduling, if you will. We have a teacher moving buildings to cover that and other things to those schools. We did have to reduce the world language and health from the pilot, because we don't have the openings in the teacher's schedule, in the phys ed teacher's schedule, to cover those health classes. Same thing with the world language. We just don't have the open periods of those specials teachers to add more instruction to sixth grade. So, there were some limitations, we found. We were limited by facilities, right? We have a lot of electives here in this building. We have a lot of places for those electives to take place, computer labs, STEAM labs downstairs, science classrooms, science labs. We don't have those at the elementary schools. Also, the timing was off. Currently, our elementary schools have 80 to 90 minutes of ELA and math timing, which makes it harder to bring in another elective, right? Because our classes here have 46 minutes, so we have more electives here. And also, our staff, our special teachers, PE health, while at work at Rackliff School, that's a small school we open to other schools, it's harder to find those special teachers to fill in more electives at this level. So, we did run into some challenges in expanding the pilot this year. But what we learned was that from teacher and student feedback, very informal conversations, I mean, two sections of 23 students each at Rackliff, so we're just talking to people at that point, talking to the teachers, and talking to teachers this year, it's very supportive, and the data speaks for itself that we saw. So, that was very supportive as well. And we learned that we are able to departmentalize in ELA and math. We can say that, but not provide all the benefits of teaming or the middle school. So, special elective facilities, increase PE health and world language instruction. We have a limit there. Structure of teacher team time, as well as students traveling independently, which would happen in a middle school. It's a little different, but this is a great intermediate step for us to go through as we continue to learn about this, and departmentalizing at this level, I think, has its benefits as students get older in elementary school. So, the recommendations for our office would be to continue this process, continue to departmentalize across the district, and make sure that our students have ELA, math, content specialists. Adjust and monitor data coming from expansion, so be dynamic. As data comes in, we learn new things, we want to be dynamic, we don't want to be stagnant and sit in our ways to do one particular thing. And transition all this experience into being content specialist. It'll help us in many different capacities. So, that's all I have to bring it up to speed. Does anyone have any questions? Would like me to talk about anything pertaining to this? The teachers. So, our teachers, one of the things we ran into, for our teachers to go to the middle school, they would need a middle school certificate. So, at the beginning of the pilot, we were interested in providing that content specialist to be a, as it comes out now, elementary with five through eight certificate in the four core subject areas. The other way a teacher could teach and be content specific would be to be highly qualified. That pretty much means they have your generalist certificate, and they take a practice test to be highly qualified. At this point, either one would work for us, and we would encourage that in sixth grade. But if we were to move that sixth grade to the middle school, it's only the middle school certified staff that could follow. So, we really encourage, we really look to bring on board teachers that are certified, general ed, with middle school five through eight certificates. Thank you, Dr. Blazer.
Do you plan on putting Spring Garden into that?
We do plan on putting Spring Garden into it.
This year?
Well, for next academic year, yeah. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, this room.
Here's your bill, which the fifth grade also used to switch.
Yes.
And I know this is just starting out now, the sixth grade, but obviously looking forward, you want a successful sixth grade.
Yeah, so if we get to a point where we have those highly qualified teachers in the sixth grade, and we move the sixth grade to the middle school, and we need middle school certified teachers, having highly qualified teachers in the elementary school is not a bad idea, because you could push down. Some of the studies I referenced has departmentalization, and I argue the effectiveness all the way down to the third grade. So, it's very common in fifth grade to be departmentalized. We're finding around the states, very common, definitely in sixth grade or middle school grade, but it is not uncommon to push that down even to fourth grade. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
We're going to have Ms. Aments do her report at this time. I'm just going to turn it right over to you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start, tonight's report is going to be a little bit different. I'm going to focus more on some staff recognition and send out a very special note of appreciation to the entire business office staff. It is their efforts each and every single day that enable this district to receive a favorable result in the annual audit. There are no major deficiencies. We are able to continue to maintain reserves and keep the district in a very good financial position. It is their initiative that they go to each and every single day. They are very proactive, independent, and make my job a lot easier. So, a very special thank you to them and to Mr. Mamora, who coordinated the efforts of the year.
But it is not uncommon to push that down even to fourth grade. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Van Nieuwen. We're going to have Ms. Jamins do her report at this time. I'm just going to turn it right over to you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start, tonight's report is going to be a little bit different. I'm going to focus more on some staff recognition, and send out a very special note of appreciation to the entire business office staff. It is their efforts each and every single day that enable this district to receive a favorable result in the annual audit. There are no major deficiencies, we are able to continue to maintain reserves and keep the district in a very good financial position. It is their initiative that they go to each and every single day. They are very proactive, independent, and make my job a lot easier. So a very special thank you to them, and to Mr. Memora, who coordinated the efforts of the audit this year. Continuing with that, we'd like to recognize another group, and I will call them the unsung heroes. These are individuals who put the safety and security of our students at the forefront each and every single day. They do so with little recognition, but they bring a lot of heart. Whether they're bringing the students to schools here in Nutley, or transporting them to Essex County, other schools, or to Passaic, as far as Morris, even Union County. They bring our students to field trips all over New Jersey, they even take them to places Pennsylvania and New York. In addition, they transport students to numerous competitions throughout the year, and to a myriad of athletic events. They do so with a smile, they are always very respectful, hardworking, and reliable. The drivers and aides who are part of our transportation department work under the direction of the transportation coordinator. And I know she's hiding, because she didn't want me to recognize her, but Ms. Peggy Hollywood does a fantastic job each and every day with this crew. We all know too well how challenging it is to travel the roads in New Jersey, whether it's traffic congestion, whether it's construction, one week they close one lane, next week on the same road they close another lane, and now we have to deal with distracted drivers. This past Saturday, while bringing the wrestling team and the coaches back home from an event on Route 287, one of our drivers encountered such a challenge. Right now, I'd like to turn it over to our athletic director, Mr. Pyro, who is here this evening with the coaches and some of the athletes. And they're going to talk about this indeed.
Thank you, Ms. Jamins. I come here tonight as your athletic director, I come here as a member of the community, but most importantly, I come here as a godfather and uncle to one of the members of the wrestling team who was on that bus. And, you know, we schedule over six hundred athletic events every year. Of that six hundred, probably sixty percent of them are away, where I have to travel somewhere. Saturday afternoon, I got the one focal I've never gotten in thirteen years, and my heart fell into my stomach when Mr. DiPiano says we got into an accident. Because you automatically fear the worst. Ironically, two wrestlers from another school were driving from an event, missed their exit, jumped over to the median to try and get to their exit, and broadsided our bus. I said, "Is everybody okay?" They said, "Everybody's fine." Mr. DiPiano said, "Had it not been for Chuck Baker, our driver, it would have been a catastrophe." I said, "What happened?" He said, "He got the bus under control, he pumped the brakes, he did everything that he's supposed to do. We were seconds from crashing into the guardrail or going up into the woods, and he brought that bus back, and he got it under control. And had not been for him, we would have been, it would have been a catastrophe." And I immediately thought about recently what happened in the Bronx where a bus crashed and twelve to thirteen people were hurt. The tragedy in Paramus, where, you know, people's lives were changed forever. And we talk about keeping our kids safe, these are the people that keep our kids safe. And you're right, they are on some hero's. And when I called Chuck later that evening to thank him, and tell him what a great job he did, the first thing he said to me, he said, "Joe, the only thing I was concerned about was the safety of our kids." He didn't say "those kids," he didn't say "the kids," he said "our kids." Had it not, Chuck Baker is a hero. He's a hero. It was, it could have been a catastrophic accident. Thank God the two kids from St. Peters who crashed into us are okay, their car spun out. But had not been for Chuck's training, his quick wit, and knowing exactly what to do at a very, very scary time, this could be a whole different conversation. So, I know when you see this somewhere, Chuck, stand up. And our wrestlers are here today, and he's a hero. Thanks to you.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to reiterate what Joe said. You know, I'm in the buses, I've been in the buses now twelve months of the year for three different sports, and there's sometimes, you know, when you're in those buses, you don't feel right sometimes. But we didn't feel that way with Chuck at all, and myself, Coach Tocco, were in the front of the bus, and nobody knew what really happened at first. But what Joe said was correct. Chuck kept us on the road, and he didn't slam the brakes so the bus would S out, he did everything correctly, and I'm grateful. I was on the window that was looking right at the guardrail. So, and I'm confident, unfortunately, that if it was some of our other drivers, it may have turned out worse. But I'm thankful that when we got on the bus on Saturday morning, it was Chuck driving. So, thank you, Chuck, I appreciate it.
I'd like to get a picture of Chuck and the wrestling team, and if that's okay with everybody, I don't want to take up any more of your time. So guys, why don't you come up on here, Chuck, Peggy, why don't you come up, and we'll get a nice picture. And again, thank you, Chuck, for everything that you do. Thank you for a picture. Chuck, right about the top. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you all. Again, as always, I thank you guys for our support, your support, and for allowing you to privilege to be the athletic director, and to work with these kids and these great individuals that support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pyro. Mr. Baker, just a few words, I'm going to also put it up to the board. Thank you. I mean, to be a driver, you know, just me as a personal driver on the road a lot, to be able to scan the road, and it's only me in that vehicle, to know that our kids are in the hands of someone who can be calm, can do what needs to be done in those moments, speaks much higher than anything I can put into words, and I appreciate everything that you do for this district, and keeping our children at the forefront of what's important and keeping them safe. And I truly, truly appreciate that. I'm going to open it up to the board for anyone else who would like to say anything.
I've been with Chuck a long time, many different times on the bus, before, I used to go up to South Mountain, Chuck is, Chuck has always done a good post, forget about it. Chuck has always, you've been with him, and you see what he does with our students on the bus, and when we're hockey, and it's warmed up when they come out, and the ice and the snow, and through that season, Chuck's done a great job, cares about all our children, Chuck.
I'm just going to reiterate that when Mrs. Hollywood calls my phone on a Saturday, and the first thing she says is, "Everybody's okay," you can be quite sure that my heart is in my throat, and I've already started to cry. So for me, hearing the story, and knowing everybody was okay, and how well that you handled not just the situation, but the students, and made everybody feel so safe, and made everybody feel that they were going to get home on Saturday, is value above everything else that you could do. And for that, I have not just thanks, but tremendous gratitude.
I'm just going to add to what actually Joe said, and for somebody who has a kid that should have been on the bus that day, I can't thank you enough for doing what you do every day, and assuring that those little, those young boys there got home safe, and along with the girls that were on that bus as well. So, from my heart, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you again. All right, there is no president's report this evening, and we're going to turn it over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Julie Glazer.
So, good evening again for everybody who's left. Obviously, we have a lot to be proud of this week. Not only the stories you've just heard, but our Nutley High School athletes, coaches, and their families participated in signing day for the colleges and teams they've committed to, was a lovely ceremony, and congratulations to everybody. Additionally, myself, Leanne Martin, our coordinator of math, Cape Twelve, Kent Venia, and Janine Locensolo, our directors of curriculum instruction and assessment, and Josh DeWald, one of our teachers from Yanacost School, did present at the Learning Forward Regional Conference Health here in Nutley. We were able to share some of the terrific work that we're doing with professional learning here, but also to be able to inform the work that's happening in area districts. I can't tell you how important it is, not just for staff development to continue, but for the fact that our own staff development, our job of professional learning that happens every day, is recognized and able to be shared and meaningful to other districts. Tomorrow, there's additional professional development scheduled, it's for our coaches and the Nutley High School administrative team, Attorney David Nash of the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association, and the FEA will be coming in and working with them, looking at our athletic code of conduct, in particular, aspects of hazing and bullying. Our leadership has done a really good job of naming it to begin to change it, and I'm looking forward to making all of those expectations systemic. Please note that the district will be closed on Monday, February eighteenth, for President's Day, and the schools will be closed for staff and students through February twenty-second. At our Board of Education meeting on February twenty-fifth, we'll have a presentation on the one-to-one Chromebook implementation from Dr. Soja, and for being here again tonight, we love having you. And it will also be the public presentation of the demographers report by Dr. Ross Haber. Kindergarten registration also begins February twenty-fifth, that'll continue through into March, the first week of March. And since I've been getting texts all meeting from even within the auditorium, let me just say, since I know that you know that I know, that the governor's called a state of emergency already for tomorrow, please note that I promise I am monitoring the forecast with all of my superintendent colleagues throughout Essex County. We in Nutley, in our area of the state, we're only expecting up to three inches of snow and sleet, that's supposed to turn to rain and wash it all away. The mayor and the Department of Public Works have already primed the roads. Of course, I'll make the call if it's necessary to do that, to keep our students and staff safe, but I am hoping not to use a third snow day already this early in the snow year. Even though the groundhog didn't see a shadow, and supposedly we're going to have a short winter, I'm going to tell you, I'm pretty skeptical. If I do have to call it, like I said, I will. And thank you in advance to Ms. Linda McDonald's eighth grade class. Have a great evening.
Okay, we're going to move over to our committee reports. We're going to have Lisa Dancheck-Martin with academic.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on February sixth. Dr. Soja presented the provided presentation on a one-to-one Chromebook implementation. Dr. Rogirio provided an update on the world language bilingual and ESL programs. Access testing begins later this month for all ELL students. Dr. Rogirio also discussed professional learning for all seven through twelve staff to provide strategies for teaching the ELL child in the regular classroom, and gave an update on the seal of bilingual literacy, world language, National Honor Society, and possibilities for additional language study at Nutley High School. Mr. Vanier reviewed the sixth grade TEEM model presentation that we saw earlier today. Ms. Locensolo gave an update on kindergarten registration, which will begin later this month and continue into March. Mr. Vanier and Ms. Locensolo provided an update on extended day program, including data supporting the changes that have been made already this year. Dr. Glazer reviewed the academic calendar for 2019-2020, and we are already working on the 2020-2021 academic calendar. Dr. Glazer reviewed the draft of the demographic study provided by Dr. Haber, and he will be making the presentation at the next public meeting on February twenty-fifth. Dr. Glazer also reviewed the budget development process and presented the next steps in the process. Ms. Jamins will make a presentation on the process to the public in February. Mr. Vanier reviewed the field trips and professional development requests. Our next academic committee meeting will be Wednesday, March thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We're going to move it over to Ms. Vera Kuzinski for administration.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. The administration committee met on February the seventh. We had a presentation from Mrs. Betsy Ginsburg, the BOE president of Glen Ridge, and the Gardensmith Coalition representative came to the committee to discuss advocacy efforts regarding state aid, funding for special education, and infrastructure. We also discussed the security referendum passed statewide in November, and how to access these dollars. We will pursue a meeting with the Assembly Commissioner and the governors, uh, the governor, I'm sorry. Dr. Glazer reviewed the draft demographers report, Dr. Haber will be present to the community on February twenty-fifth. Dr. Glazer reviewed where we are with the budget presentation process and presented the next step in the process. Once again, this year, we will be doing a reregistration, this year it will be grades four and nine. Reregistration, reregistration will take place in May. As we have done previously, those students who do not demonstrate residency will be disenrolled. Dr. Glazer reviewed the safety and security meeting held on February seventh, including new courses for purchases, and an update on project completion. Dr. Glazer shared a new job description for the position of director in the buildings in Rouse, which we discussed at length. The committee also discussed the 2019 through 2021 calendar, extended day also, and we had an update on our legal, personnel legal issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski. We have policy, which I will be reviewing tonight. In the meeting that we had on February sixth, Lisa Dancheck-Martin, myself, and Eric Guzer were in attendance. We reviewed priority policies, as well those policy alerts received from Strauss Esme for review. There were no emergent policies, we are holding the alerts over to the next meeting of the committee. The medical marijuana policy was discussed at length, including looking at the New Jersey state guidelines and sample policies from other districts in the state. It is on the agenda tonight for first reading. Language to update the HIP policy held over for the previous BOE committee is also on the agenda for first reading. Next scheduled meeting for the policy committee is March thirteenth. We now come to a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on earlier resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allows for twenty minutes for these communications, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within the requirements. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements directed to me as a chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign with a kuzo before you take the microphone. First person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none. Ms. Dancheck-Martin, would you take academic, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolution one is written.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schelera?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I agree with administration resolutions one through three.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schelera?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I agree with administration resolutions one through three.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schelera?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I agree with administration resolutions one through three.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schelera?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mr. Farah, would you take resolutions, finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President, resolution. Move resolutions to the board. It's written.
Second. Second. Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kuzo.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farauer, would you take Resolutions, Finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Move Resolution four. It's written.
Second.
Sir.
Discussion. Roll call, Miss Kapuza.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Farauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sella?
Yes. Mrs. Clark, would you take Personnel, please?
I would like to move Personnel Resolution number one as written.
Sir.
Discussion. Roll call, Miss Kapuza.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Farauer?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sella?
Yes. Mrs. Sarrow, would you take Policy Resolution, please?
Yes, I'd like to move Policy Resolution one as written.
Sir.
Discussion. Roll call, Miss Kapuza.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Farauer?
Phone two, stay.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sella?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sella?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sella?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Miss Kapuza before you take the microphone. Will the first person, please step forward, who would like to be heard? Seeing none. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters in central public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recesses closed executive session. It is time to discuss property acquisition, student matters, and personnel. Be further resolved that the results of the discussions will be made by public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, when reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Can we have a motion to go into closed?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.